The only increase that we did have were costs for ballots.[630.52-636.37][S06] And as you know, the state and federal budgets pays for the ballots, but in a local election,[636.37-638.62][S06] it doesn't.[638.62-642.41][S06] So we still, no matter how many people come out to vote, we still have to buy ballots[642.79-648.21][S06] for 55,000 voters, and that comes to about $9,000, depending on whether it's two-page[648.79-651.41][S06] ballot, you know, back-to-back, whatever.[651.41-653.12][S06] So there's the increase there.[653.12-659.87][S06] And we have a small increase for cleaning of the, complete cleaning in the school department[659.87-662.02][S06] that we have taken over.[662.02-663.12][S06] Thank you, Mr. Donovan.[663.12-664.12][S06] He used to pay it.[664.12-665.87][S06] Now he gives it to me.[665.87-667.52][S06] So those are the only two increases.[667.52-670.12][S06] Other than that, we're pretty level-funded.[670.12-672.52][S01] Great.[672.52-674.12][S01] Any questions from councilors?[680.87-684.41][S01] Seeing none, I would be remissified and recognize Council Lozey, who's now joined[684.41-689.41][S01] us, and Council President Darren Sariswell, and Council Calucci, if we missed you earlier,[689.41-691.12][S01] the dean of our council.[691.12-692.12][S01] Welcome.[692.12-693.12][S01] Anything else?[693.12-694.12][S01] Any questions?[694.12-695.12][S06] That was easy.[695.12-696.12][S01] Very easy.[696.12-697.12][S06] Nothing to be scared of, chief.[697.12-698.12][S01] I would like to just, Janet, if you wouldn't mind just telling us briefly about what[702.12-705.12][S01] you've done recently in our high schools, all the high schools in the city around...[705.12-708.12][S06] Yes, I think it was a, you know, great turnout that, you know, we have a new election[710.29-714.41][S06] coordinator, Sarah Bullock, and she's put us on Facebook.[714.41-717.12][S06] We now have our own social media site.[717.12-722.87][S06] And we went out to all the, six actually, six high schools in Lynn, you know, because[723.12-726.62][S06] we counted Kip and St. Mary's and Fecto Larry.[726.62-729.41][S06] And all of the principals were so happy to see us.[729.41-734.12][S06] And, you know, Dr. Tutwiler and Deputy Superintendent Rogero were great.[734.12-738.41][S06] And we ended up getting actually 103 new voters.[738.41-742.62][S06] So you all should be very happy that you have 103 new voters in the city of Lynn.[742.62-746.12][S06] So I'm hoping that next year it'll get bigger and better, and, you know, as kids become[746.41-747.41][S06] more aware of it.[747.41-748.41][S01] That's great.[748.41-749.41][S01] That's great.[749.41-750.41][S01] Thank you.[750.41-751.41][S06] Yeah.[751.41-755.62][S06] So like us on Facebook, and share it.[755.62-757.37][S06] Because really, that's the way to go.[757.37-759.29][S06] It reaches more people, not just kids, I mean grandparents.[759.29-762.62][S06] Everyone has Facebook now, and that's the way to go.[762.62-764.87][S01] You'll remind us to vote on those critical days, right?[764.87-765.87][S06] Exactly.[765.87-766.87][S01] That's how you do it.[766.87-767.87][S01] Yeah, get a notification.[767.87-768.87][S01] Thank you, Janet.[768.87-769.87][S06] Okay.[769.87-770.87][S01] All right.[770.87-772.21][S01] Moving right along.[772.21-774.12][S01] We have CFO Michael Bertino.[782.02-784.37][S01] I know you're going to kind of wear several hats.[784.37-789.37][S01] I don't know if you want to just do CFO duties now, or kind of go through the other responsibilities[790.12-792.12][S01] like collectors, treasurers, and personnel.[792.12-794.12][S01] Go wish.[794.12-797.41][S07] I defer that back to yourself.[797.41-798.41][S07] I mean, whatever's easier.[798.41-801.41][S01] All right, I think if you can cluster all three, I think that would be good on[801.41-804.41][S01] time, and councils will have questions for you regarding each area.[804.41-806.62][S07] Sure.[806.62-810.62][S07] First, Michael Bertino, City CFO.[810.62-816.87][S07] Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight on behalf of my department.[816.87-823.41][S07] So some of the things we did was we tried to establish a very open and transparent[823.41-825.41][S07] budget process.[825.41-832.62][S07] The process started in late October with an email with instructions.[832.62-839.02][S07] We followed it up with a department head meeting, and then a series of time, date-sensitive[839.87-842.37][S07] dates throughout the next two or three months.[842.37-848.41][S07] We then met with departments, with the mayor's staff, myself, the comptroller, had some[848.72-849.52][S07] interaction.[849.52-854.12][S07] Then we met after that, several weeks later, we met one-on-one, just in case people forgot[855.37-857.87][S07] or there was something that slipped their mind.[857.87-862.87][S07] You also have to look at it as a lot of people may not have their numbers readily available,[862.87-867.37][S07] because if there's going to be an increase in a contractual service or from a vendor,[867.37-869.72][S07] you're not going to get it six months ahead of time.[869.72-874.41][S07] So we thought it was important to move that process along and give them an opportunity[874.41-879.62][S07] to say, hey, one of my vendors went up 2.1%, we have to account for that.[879.62-884.62][S07] And then we had a final meeting in late April with the mayor's staff to kind of bring it[884.72-887.22][S07] into balance and look at some other things.[887.22-893.22][S07] So as the chief financial officer, it was important for me to set the stage for that[893.22-895.87][S07] process, because I'm new here.[895.87-899.41][S07] I know I'm the first full-time CFO, so I wanted to make sure.[899.41-902.62][S07] And like I told everybody, this is really the building blocks.[902.62-903.62][S07] This is step one.[903.62-909.12][S07] We plan on improving on it each year, hopefully getting in it a little bit sooner as well,[910.02-914.37][S07] although you can only move as quick as, you know, government moves with the governor presenting[914.87-918.41][S07] his budget, the House and the Senate as well.[918.41-924.62][S07] Along with that, I'm happy to let you know that we have a draft policy that's going[924.62-928.22][S07] to be coming out in the next couple of weeks, where we reviewed all our policies and we're[928.37-931.22][S07] updating them.[931.22-934.87][S07] Along with that, we've kind of just also fostered kind of a team approach.[934.87-941.62][S07] If you look at our organizational chart, I'm responsible for the comptroller, the IT,[941.62-944.87][S07] chief procurement, treasurer, collector, and the director of assessing.[944.87-948.62][S07] So although we haven't had time in the last two or three weeks, we have been meeting[948.62-953.37][S07] regularly as a group, coordinating our efforts, and just communicating better.[953.37-956.87][S07] So more than just one or two departments knows what's going on.[956.87-959.37][S07] The whole financial team knows what's going on.[959.37-965.87][S07] So I'm happy to say that that's been pretty enlightening, and we're going to continue[965.87-966.87][S07] that.[966.87-970.62][S07] And that's, for the most part, you know, I think it's a lot, and we hope to continue[970.62-973.87][S07] to do this throughout my first full year as CFO.[973.87-977.41][S07] As far as the treasurer's office, another critical office, the treasurer's office manages[979.12-983.37][S07] and handles all of the city cash and collections.[983.37-988.62][S07] We're just about ready to recommend to hire for that.[988.62-993.02][S07] It got stalled a little bit because of the budget rush we had at the end, but we're looking[994.37-999.02][S07] forward to bringing on a new personnel in that office and really ramping up that office.[999.02-1002.12][S07] We have strong collections in the city.[1002.12-1005.62][S07] We need to focus on improving our cash management.[1005.62-1009.41][S07] I think when you see the final numbers, you'll see that I think we've probably got a double[1009.79-1014.22][S07] or triple last year's interest income number, just by using the resources with the brick-and-mortar
institutions around the city.[1018.72-1025.12][S07] We also, together with all these departments, including DPW, you know, we put together[1025.12-1032.72][S07] a new trash program that hopefully will improve the unpopular situation of sending out trash[1033.12-1038.12][S07] bills, but, you know, from what I hear, we had a lot less complaints the second time[1038.12-1042.87][S07] around, so everybody kind of pulled together at no cost to the city, and we put out, you[1042.87-1049.22][S07] know, a better database that'll hopefully be easier to receive people's funds.[1049.22-1050.41][S07] So that's an important role.[1050.41-1053.87][S07] We have a lot of borrowing going on in the city.[1053.87-1056.52][S07] In that department, we want to improve the bond rating.[1056.52-1061.12][S07] We're probably one of the lower in the states, we're looking to improve that each and every[1061.41-1062.41][S07] year.[1062.41-1067.02][S07] And improving that goes on improving our reserves, which you'll see later on in the[1067.12-1072.12][S07] night at another subcommittee, there'll be a request to transfer some money into reserves.[1073.41-1080.12][S07] Any healthy community has reserves anywhere from 5% to 15%, you know.[1080.12-1087.52][S07] Ideally, you know, everybody's different, but the range is between 5% and 15%.[1087.52-1093.87][S07] So along with the treasurer managing the debt, we hope to improve on a lot of those[1093.87-1097.72][S07] issues surrounding the treasurer collector's office.[1097.72-1103.22][S07] The other department that I can speak for, and I'm going to ask our new personnel director[1103.22-1108.12][S07] to come on up, his name is Drew Russo.[1114.02-1118.41][S07] Although Drew wasn't here for, he's only been here two days, we thought it was a good[1119.02-1121.37][S07] opportunity to have him come to the podium.[1121.37-1126.02][S07] But a lot of the vision in the city that Drew's going to help us achieve is we're[1126.02-1132.91][S07] going to transform the personnel department into a more of a human resource department,[1132.91-1138.22][S07] making sure people understand all of their benefits, understand the consequences of[1138.41-1141.37][S07] the benefits, the pros and cons.[1141.37-1146.72][S07] And we hope to have an annual benefits fair that's a little bit more robust than it's[1146.87-1149.37][S07] been in the future.[1149.37-1153.37][S07] It's confusing to a lot of us, unless you do it every day.[1153.37-1158.37][S07] There's a lot of education we can do around the delivery of benefits, and Drew's going[1159.52-1161.37][S07] to help us achieve that.[1161.37-1162.87][S07] It's going to take time, obviously.[1162.87-1164.52][S07] He just spent here a few days.[1164.52-1169.72][S07] But we're looking forward to transforming that department into a more active department,[1169.72-1174.12][S07] and they'll take a great role in helping move the city forward.[1174.12-1177.37][S07] I don't want to put Drew on the spot, but I can ask him if he has any questions or he[1177.52-1179.12][S07] wants to say any comments.[1182.22-1183.22][S01] Welcome, welcome.[1183.22-1184.52][S08] Why, thank you very much.[1184.52-1185.52][S08] Thank you, Mr. Chairman.[1185.52-1190.62][S08] I just wanted to say that I'm excited to get started as the city's personnel director.[1190.62-1195.72][S08] We clearly have a lot of work to do, but I think that there's a great opportunity to[1195.87-1201.41][S08] standardize a lot of practices, to look at our payroll and benefits administration,[1201.41-1208.72][S08] to do things like finding one employee incentive program that covers all city employees.[1208.72-1210.37][S08] And I'm looking forward to doing that work.[1210.37-1215.87][S08] We have a great staff that has been working hard in the interim period between personnel
directors, and it's day two. I'm excited to get going, and I'm excited to work within this budget to make the goals of the personnel department a reality. And I thank you for giving me that opportunity to work with all of you.
to work with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Drew.
Thank you, Drew. Now, I'll be happy to take any questions about any of those budgets or amounts in those budgets if anybody would like to discuss.
Questions for the CFO. Counsel Staubert.
Thank you. Just getting back to Personnel, the uptick of the 60K in salary was due to nobody being there last year.
That's correct.
And the, just the budget overall, you know, we were hearing, you know, all year long that, you know, it's going to be a $5 million shortfall and all this if we don't, you know, get things in line. That didn't seem to happen. Was it an increase in revenue that the city generated to help offset that not taking place?
There was a couple of things. Yes, and the revenue was in the form of state aid. I think I've mentioned it before in some committee meetings. One of the first things we did was we looked at how we were delivering services and allocating expenses to both the city and the school. So where they got a rather, you know, robust increase in aid of almost 9%, my original numbers, I thought, were pretty fair at around 4.5%. So what happens is when you bring in twice the revenue than you were anticipating, and most of that has to do with the change in the formulary, some of that money goes directly to the school, and some of that money stays back in the form of expenses that the city pays on behalf of the school. So you probably read in the newspaper that the school's getting 15.1 million more. Well, that would be true if they paid 100% of their own budget, but the city manages about $60 million of their budget. So when their budget goes up 15 million, we have to account for the expenses that we pay on the city's behalf. So because that number was so great, 2/3 go directly to the school to meet net school spending, but 1/3 stays with the city in round numbers to pay for those expenses on their behalf. Along with that, we had, that brought us down to roughly, roughly $2.3 or $2.4 million. So what we did after that was some of the revenues that we paid for in next year's tax recap, the snow and ice deficit, the trust fund deficit, last year alone, that was $2.4 million. So you're assuming you're going to have that reoccurring because the healthcare trust has been in deficit for seven or eight years. Since last year's budget fully funded the healthcare, I no longer needed to raise that almost $700,000. So that created some budget space because the health trust is performing much better today because instead of putting in less than what we were told, the city put in exactly with what they were told, and that's going to result in a small surplus. So that's about 600 or 700,000. We also had about $400,000 or $500,000 in vacancies that were not funding in this year's budget. So my office last year was budgeted for 1.5 personnel. It's only budgeted for one. The mayor's office was budgeted for two personnel. They're only going to offer one position. So ISD, I believe, had about three open positions. They're going to do without those three open positions. So collectively, DPW also had a retirement and an open position. We're not going to fill that. So collectively, that brought us down another 500,000 or so. And then what we did was, we had, so by doing that, and so now I took away from that budgetary spot I had to raise the snow and ice and for the trust fund deficit. So when I look, I turn the page over to 2020, I copy and paste everything over. It's actually twofold because I have no zero, I have no money to raise, and I have that position next year. So that kind of went away and brought us into a balanced budget. So now you say, well, what are we going to do if we have a bad winter? Well, we did put a couple hundred thousand more into the snow and ice budget, and we also put a couple hundred-
Does that revolve, so if we have a mild winter and it doesn't get used, does that stay in that account?
What that does is that will revolve back into free cash. If it's not used, it'll be left on the table, and when we close the books, that'll go to free cash. But I think it's, we're getting towards a more realistic number. So when you do all these things together, and we squeezed, everybody was, you know, I think we had a pretty good process for our first year about interaction, going back and forth. Everybody knows they could always use more money, but this is how we balance the budget. And a combination of all these things, from looking at our net school spending to removing unfilled positions, from using one-time revenues to plug deficits, that's how we cleared up the budget. Now, the budget still doesn't have sufficient money for capital. It doesn't have money for raises, but the goal really was to keep everybody working and not hurt anybody that was currently in a position, which we're able to do that. So, you know, we didn't work miracles, but we got the budget in balance. There's a little bit of capital, and it's kind of like step one of hopefully a four or five-step process that we'll be able to build the city back up to where we're starting to do parks over, we're starting to repair, you know, firehouses and purchase and build new schools. It's going to take us some time, but at least we kind of, everybody understands the process, and we're just going to continue to build on and improve this process year in and year out.
Counsel Field.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just on the overall budget itself, what role did Mr. Cronin play at the state level?
Some of the things I ran by Sean was, would it be acceptable to use the one-time revenues to pay off the deficits? And he was okay with that because the deficits were caused from a previous year. So that was the role that he played. You know, he still knows it's not a complete budget because we don't have money set aside for union contracts, and we don't have money set aside for the capital we need. But everybody is here to work. They're here another year to work under this budget, and with the growth going on in the city, some of the things that we hope to get done to save money, they're going to start paying dividends. It's going to take some time, but we hope they'll start paying dividends.
That's the only role that he played as far as-
Yeah. Now, the role would be, his next role would be, once we have a vote of the council, we'll then have 10 days to input it into the tax recap, recapulation software, the tax recap software. He'll look at all those to make sure it makes sense. He'll compare it to last year's to make sure the numbers we're using and everything is copasthetic. I will let everybody know, the budget does use the governor's numbers, and some of the other numbers we're getting are a little bit higher. But some of the numbers, the gross numbers are higher, but also the chargebacks are higher, too. So we fully anticipate to rebalance this budget again, but the governor needs to sign his budget before we can rebudget ours again. So there'll be some give and take towards the end when the governor signs his budget, but we're comfortable with the numbers we have. We'll be able to absorb it and/or add a little bit of resources when the final numbers are signed off on.
Any other questions, councils? Counsel Baden.
Yes. Are we going to speak with Sean Cronin before we have to vote on this budget?
If that's the council's pleasure, I could have, I could certainly have him come in. He will comment on the budget. He'll opine on the budget as presented. I can guarantee you, he's going to, you know, shake his head because we didn't put money in for increases. I can guarantee you, he's going to say you had a capital plan that has, you know, several hundred million dollars, and you only put a little bit of money in, but he understands the predicament we're in. If you'd like him to be here, I'll put that request in.
My next question would be, if we bring Sean Cronin in to talk to him, is this going to be before or after you negotiate contracts with unions?
Well, we're ongoing in negotiations, so I don't think that's going to play a part. I think Sean's going to comment on the budget either way and kind of give us some direction. I mean, it could just be a timing issue. We could settle in a day, a week, or six months. So what the Acts of Chapter 58, 2018 says is, once the council votes on the final budget, we have 10 days to put it into the system, and then he's going to look at it and say, hey, I think you're a little too aggressive here. He's never going to say we didn't, you know, in our revenue, but our expenses, as long as we can support them, those are what they are. He's not going to, he's going to mention that we didn't put money in for increases, but, you know, we only, we don't have what we don't have. So if you want him to come in, I'll be happy to put that request in.
I don't think we should put a request in to see him until we know what the budget really is. You know what he's dealing with. How do we know what the increases are going to be for raises?
Well, regardless of what the increases are, we still have to present a budget. So we presented, this is our budget as of today. If the governor signs and we get, you know, 300,000 more in money, then we're going to have to come back and, you know, appropriate 300,000 more. But whether we settle contracts or not, I don't think it's going to be a part of that. I mean, we hope to, but we can never tell when that's going to happen. But we still need to have a balanced budget, and this budget is balanced as it's presented.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counsel Lozey.
Yes, just to elaborate on that, Mike, so you're submitting a budget as balanced without any union contracts signed. So without getting into collective bargaining, theoretically, then you're, the city's position is zero. Is that correct? Or if there is a 300,000 that comes up later on in the state budget, that's what money you'd have? Is that correct?
No, that's not correct.
Aside from the negotiations with the healthcare costs, is that what you're-
No, that's not correct. I mean, negotiations, you know, there's so many different moving parts to these. When the, we can't give what we don't have. There's no secret that we borrowed $14 million and for operating. So as Counsel Staubert said, we were fortunate enough to close, you know, the $5 million gap, and I explained how. But unless you want to support laying off people to give raises, that's a whole nother conversation. So we cannot put money in a budget that we don't have. So the budget is presented. We met all of our obligations. The obligation to go for raises is, when we present those contracts to the council, I would assume that the question's going to be, how are you going to support it? How are you going to fund it? And we would then come up and say, this is how we're going to fund it between A, B, and C, and that will cover the increase.
So down the road, you're hypothesizing justification for any potential settlement of contracts?
Yeah, any potential settlement will have a revenue source or a funding source as well as an estimated expenditure.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counsel Staubert.
I could just ask one more. I know I asked. Mike, just roughly, what does 1% cost on the city side?
Approximately 550,000.
I just had one clarifying question, Mike. On when you said to Sean Cronin, some advice or guidance you looked for, when you were saying, would you be paying down the 14 million debt quicker with extra funds? Or what kind of debt service were you referring to when you had those discussions with him? And did he advise you not to do that?
No, the conversation I had was, would he allow me to pay off the snow and ice deficit?
Oh, the previous deficit?
Yeah, anytime and-
Not the loan?
No, not the loan.
The loan, we're paying as we go, 10-year note, and we're paying that.
That's correct.
Okay.
So I didn't want him to think, because all the money comes from the same place, but because it was outside the fiscal year, he kind of gave me his blessing, and I didn't want to do that without his blessing.
Previous year. I got you. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the councils? We'll probably hear from you at some point again, maybe during the next several weeks. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving right along now to our comptroller, Mr. Spencer. Steve, welcome.
Welcome. Hi, Stephen Spencer, City Comptroller, basically the fiscal watchdog of the city. So- You can. It's going to help. If there's any questions. I mean, worked very diligently with CFO, Mayor's Office, put this whole package together for you tonight, and it's all there in detail.
Any questions for our comptroller? Seeing none?
I've got a question.
Go ahead, Counselor. Kaluchi.
Why is your shirt so white?
Even on a 12-hour day, I know. Must be tied. Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you, Mr. Spencer. We're going to move right along. We did have counsel on aging next. We'll move them, they could be delayed. We'll move them to the end of the agenda. We will go to Fire Department Chief Steve Archer. I saw Chief Archer here. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Steve Archer, City Fire Chief. The budget that we have is a lean budget. It is a tight budget, but obviously, considering the city's fiscal situation, we understand that. We realize the realities of what it is today, and so we are committed to living within the budget. We believe we can live within the budget. Obviously, the big thing is there were no layoffs. As you all know, we were able to get those 20 new hires through the SAFE grant, which was a very big thing and had a huge impact on reducing our overtime budget. So we are committed to living within this budget through the fiscal year. We think we're going to be able to do that and hopefully still provide an adequate level of services. And any questions?
Thank you, chief. Counsel Staubert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And welcome to Counsel Annette.
Chief, I saw in the report that we, that the Fire Department ambulance does about 1,100 transports annually.
Mm-hmm.
Where does the money go? I'm assuming that generates money, and how much does it generate?
It does. That money goes into the general fund. It's always been that way. We've never had a separate fund for, you know, to fund Fire Department operations or anything like that. It always goes into the general fund. The amount that we raised this year, I think probably the CFO and the comptroller might have a better idea of what that number is right now. I can't tell you that number off the top of my head, but it's always been that way. The money is-
It's roughly, roughly today's date, ambulance revenues is 409,000. We've budgeted 500,000.
Are we, so are you under what was anticipated?
We're a little-
And that goes into the general fund?
Yeah. And that is low. We've had years where it was significantly higher than that. We did have some issues with our billing company, the company that was collecting the revenues, which they kind of dropped the ball for us a little bit, and so we're trying to now recoup some of the other collections that we should have been collecting. So the number should be significantly higher than that. We anticipate it will be in fiscal 2020.
So the collections get subbed out to an outside contractor?
Correct.
Thank you.
Questions for the chief? Counsel Field.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, just over the past year with regards to Union Hospital, diverting more and more calls.
Yep.
Requiring your ambulance service going to Salem Hospital and other local hospitals.
Yep.
How much more of an expense are you experiencing, and what do you forecast over the next year when they plan to close completely?
Yeah, we forecast it is going to be a pretty big strain on our department because now everything needs to go to Salem or one of the other area hospitals. We're not going to have the advantage of having that local Union Hospital. So that's going to increase our out-of-service time when that ambulance is there, and their turnaround time to get back in service is going to increase wear and tear on that ambulance vehicle because of longer travel times as well as, you know, the other incidentals that you can imagine, gas costs. And so basically, just our maintenance costs are going to go up, or turnaround time is going to increase, which potentially means less runs that we're able to do and get back in service and do the runs. So it's going to be a strain on us. There's no question about it. And it's just something we're going to have to deal with. It is what it is.
You're experiencing that now?
We're beginning to see it already, yeah.
And are they communicating clearly with you about those?
Yeah, they've, I mean, the hospital, we communicate with them on a regular basis. We talk about this, you know, we talk about these issues, and, you know, everybody's seen this coming. We know it, we know it's coming. And, but, you know, as I said, it is what it is. So.
Any other questions from the counselors? Seeing none. I did note, chief, there's 14,000 calls. Is that EMT calls along with fire runs, or is that exclusively one or the other?
No, that's all, that's all calls. It runs somewhere in the area between 14,000 and 15,000 calls. 60 to 70% of the calls are EMS runs. So, you know, if you do the math, that tells you what number you're looking at EMS, but that's the total one. So it isn't-
How busy your folks are.
Very, very busy.
That's a lot of, that's a lot of win.
It's a lot of runs. It's a lot of runs.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Counsel Staubert.
I just want to say, you know, thanks to you and all you guys for all that you do in the tight situation you have to work in.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your support and like us on Facebook.
Good plug. Thank you, chief. All right, we're moving right along now. We're going to go to the Informational Technology Department, which is Mr. Peter Estradios. Welcome, Peter.
Yep. My name's Peter Estradios. I'm in charge of the IT department, which is, we take care of file and print services, all your emails, make sure the network is up and running. Basically, we've had a couple of increases. We are now in charge of an operator, which was just hired recently, and we also are getting a new software to replace Cronos Timekeeper software for ISD custodians. Other than that, it's pretty much the same.
Counsel Lozey.
Peter, in the past, you used to be responsible for mailings. Does you-
We still do that.
You're still doing that as well?
Yes, yep.
And how about the trash fees? That still go through IT or?
No, that's, that goes through-
The other?
EPW.
That was another, okay. Do you foresee any difficulties coming up in the next year with your budget for mailing and?
No, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be too bad.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Any other questions from counselors? Counsel Field.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Peter, I know the school experienced a troublesome failure. Do you have to, is in your budget, any type of software to prevent anything like that happening on the city side of it?
Well, we have firewalls in place, and we have obviously antivirus software. We're going to run into an issue soon about needing to replace computers because Windows 7 is going to no longer be, there's no patches going to be available for it, so we're going to have to replace all the computers in the near future.
And that's within the budget here, or is that?
No, that's in the general fund, correct.
Thank you. I just want to comment on that. We have a request in for free cash as well because all of our computers are coming to the end of their useful life. So they won't be supported. We'll be susceptible to risk and hacking and stuff like that. So we've requested 100,000, figuring it's going to take, you know, a little over a year to replace those computers as well as some of the city's servers.
That comes out of free cash? Not at-
We put a request in for that. He has, his budget has a small amount in it, but not to handle-
Sure.
-on the level. So there is money requested through free cash to help address those needs.
And that's, the timeframe is that within this next fiscal year or?
That's, it's actually before the council tonight, so if it gets referred to committee, because it's probably going to be a year process. There's only two of them down there, and there's, I don't even want to guess on the computers, probably well over 100.
125 times, 150.
Right. So that's, that's quite a, quite a task managing the network as well as getting that implemented before they stop supporting, because once they stop supporting, patches stop coming, and then it's open season.
Thank you. And when you say all the computers, city hall, library, police, fire, all on the city side?
We're in charge of ourselves, the city hall, and the Fire Department. Library, police are all responsible for their own.
They're-
Their own.
They're on their own?
Yes.
Got you. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we're moving right along then. Thank you, Peter. Director Hurley from the Lynn Public Library. Teresa, welcome.
Good evening. Teresa Hurley, Chief Librarian. This budget lets us meet our Mar. There are certain requirements that we need to adhere to to be state certified. One of them is the municipal appropriation requirement. The second is meet the minimum standards, open to all residents of the Commonwealth, and open a minimum number of hours, and it's based on population. We have a high population, so we have to be open minimumly 63 hours a week, six days a week. That's usually through Labor Day to Memorial Day. Some are hours we can cut down our hours. And then we also have to spend at least 12% of our budget on lending materials for the public to use. Some of our highlights, we have currently 51,574 registered patrons. We average about 180 new patrons a month. Average circulation per month is 8,491. Cross-department programming, we had 409 programs with 8,731 in attendance for fiscal year 18. And we recently initiated a homebound delivery service to Lynn residents. We definitely want to do a lot more outreach. A lot of people can't come to us, so we'd like to go to them.
Any questions from the counselors? Just like to commend you on that. We saw that in the paper. It was really strong work. Excellent. Any questions for Teresa? Seeing none? Thank you. Moving on to the Lynn Police Department, we have Chief McGary, Deputy Chief Blake, and Administrator Polansky. Thank you, chief, for joining us.
Mike McGary, Chief of Police. I want to first start by talking about the difficulties everyone in the city is having, financial difficulties. We understand that a lot of departments have lost people, can't replace them. The key to a vibrant city is public safety. So I want to talk about a reoccurring theme that we've been discussing for a number of years here, and that's the lack of manpower at the Police Department. Currently, right now, we have 168 offices, all told. We project nine retirees and two promotions within July and August, which will bring us down to a total complement of 159 offices. Now, even with those offices, I hope you, our councils have taken the opportunity to go through the budget materials and see some of the highlights of our department this year. In the last two years, crime has been reduced by 30%. 16% reduction in 2017 and another 14% reduction in 2018. Opioid overdose deaths have been reduced by 23%. Gun violence has been reduced by 21% and a 77% reduction in homicides. All of that with the number of officers we have. Just two weeks ago, we saw the incident down on Union Street, that we had to call for mutual aid for a lack of officers. I want to make clear, we understand the financial constraints that the city and all these departments are facing, but it's incumbent upon me as the chief to let you know where we are and what we're doing. We are hiring some new officers, but it's not sufficient. The budget isn't sufficient enough for the officers that we need in this department to provide a full public safety and security assessment for our department. In other words, we need to provide a more full-service department. We don't have the manpower to do that. Any study that's been done of a city this size and population indicates officers should be- be about 225. We understand we're never going to see that number, but the number of 195 should be the number that we're focused on and to get to. We're far below that. So, in July of this year, with the retirees and the promotions, we're going to be down 36 officers. Even with the hires that are coming in from the academy, even when those come back into focus, both when they graduate in August and October, we'll be at 176 officers, 19 officers short. That's like an additional division of officers in our department. Again, completely understand the financial issues that the city is facing, but I think it's time that we let everyone know where we are and what the issue is. There's a coming crisis beyond these retirees. In the next two years, three years, you're going to see 20 to 30 additional officers retire from this department. So, I want you to know that while we understand the financial difficulties, and we accept the budget we have, these are the issues that we're going to have going forward, and if we don't address them very quickly, we're going to have a major problem on our hands. So, happy to take any questions from anyone here.
Counselors, questions for Chief McGary? Counselor Field.
Chief, what will it cost to get to 195?
I would venture, say, a couple of million dollars to get to that number.
67,000 plus benefits.
Yes, Counselor Lozzi.
Chief, what would be your suggestion, advice, the best way we as a city can handle this tsunami coming with the problems with Manning?
Well, obviously, we need to have a growth, strategic growth plan in place now, so that when those officers retire, we're ready to replace them. What we're doing now, and I give the mayor a tremendous amount of credit, and the CFO, they've allowed us to replace the officers that we're losing, but for a five-year period here, we had a hiring freeze. We lost approximately 30 officers to either retirement or attrition that were never replaced. So, we are not getting to our goal of what we need. This is a continuous cycle now. It's like a hamster on a wheel. We hire nine, we have 12 retire. We get some more, another 10 or 12 leave. In the early, early to mid 80s, this is what happened, and we had significant hiring at the same time, a class of 20, another class of 25. All those officers now are getting to retirement age, and they're going to start looking to leave. The officers in this department do tremendous work, but I can tell you, based on our manpower issues, they're emotionally, physically, and mentally exhausted. They are burnt out, and we need to help them. I understand the financial issues, it is what it is, but it's my job to let the council know where we are, and that's where we are right now. So, all I can say is, it's the number-one issue for me as the chief, is to reinforce the department and get it back to where I believe it should be. Therefore, we can establish or reestablish a number of these special units that we had, expand the SRO program, the CLT program, and give a full-service department that citizens and this community deserve.
I think we're all in agreement with that, chief, and you'll find that this council will support that fully, and I hope that we can achieve that. Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Counselor Stavrid.
Thank you. Chief, could you touch on the difficulty of finding young folks that want to get into the workforce?
Yeah. We recently had a police exam. I don't know how many people took that one, but the last one, in this city, we had 145 people sign up and took that exam. For a city of that size, that's just astronomical. I mean, when I took the exam years ago, you would see four, 5,000 people lining up at the high schools trying to get in to take it. There are a number of reasons for that. People don't see law enforcement as a glamorous career anymore. The hours, some of the demands. There is a fundamental lack of respect for law enforcement in some areas of the country. I don't know if it's filtered down to here, but there are a lot less people that are interested in taking exam. Even when we do have an exam, and we call for a list, and we process people, it takes over a year between the background investigations, all the other aspects of it, and the academy to get a body on the street. So, it's a difficult and long process. The sooner that we can do that, the better off we're going to be, but we have found it more and more difficult to get quality candidates. But that's a national phenomenon as well. Usually, most things start out in the West and filter back to the East. Recruitment and retention of officers in California and those areas have been a major obstacle for a number of years. We're now seeing it ourselves. We're even seeing what we call poaching, even in Massachusetts, where one department is looking to take laterals from our department. I actually had to speak with the mayor and implement a policy that we would not sign off agreeing to allow officers to lateral out of here. We simply could afford to lose more officers. This is where we're at.
I just want to say, and I think, you know, it echoes what Counselor Lozzi said, I mean, a 30 percent reduction in crime over a two-year period with the constraints that you and your folks work under is miraculous. And so, for that, I thank you and all your staff.
Thank you.
Chief, I had a couple, I'm sure you're being as competitive as possible, is there anything, the equivalent of a firefighter safe or grant that we've been exploring, or any federal, or...
Yep.
Could you speak to that a little?
Currently, nine of the officers are being hired on a COPS grant, a federal COPS grant. That was the highest amount of officers we could get out of that grant. Generally, once you get one of those, it's a number of years before you can get it again. So, but, yeah, we're constantly looking for grant money or any other opportunities to help the department.
And my follow-up, separate from the rank and file, but I was at a school committee meeting this winter with Officer Magna, who's in charge of the Crossing Gods, and she made a real nice presentation about the cuts that that department has sought over the last decade or so. Is there any opportunity to do something on Crossing Gods in this budget, or I didn't see, maybe I missed an increase, a small amount, to try and either expand that or try and offset spending on the school side, because is that legal to do? I guess my question, more question for Mr. Bertino about charging off the schools, like I know you fund the SRO program out of your budget into the schools. Similarly, I wonder if we could reverse that with adding Crossing Gods or paying a little more...
It's a budgetary thing, obviously, you know, if we receive the resources, we'd love to have more Crossing Gods, but I will tell you, in that regard too, it's getting more and more difficult to get those people as well.
Right, and substitutes, I bet, too.
Yes.
I just want to see if we can do anything for those folks, you know, they're Linners, and they usually work, you know, after a regular job and so forth, and it's 10 hours a week at 13 an hour, so I can't add to the budget, I bet colleagues can't add, but we, you know, we're only allowed to cut, it seems, but we want to advocate for that as well going forward, try and be creative on that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This is the last one? Oh, it is. And Mr. Stillion, director of the parking department. Mr. Stillion, would you like to come up? We've covered it all, save the best for last, I guess, huh? And we're ahead of schedule, we will note, we're running ahead of schedule for once.
Well, I'm Stillion, acting parking director, I'm getting pretty good at it, I'm going to my fifth year as acting. Parking departments have a lot of good things happening, we've actually upgraded all the meters, we're having a pay-by-parking going in, there's a lot of interesting things happening, good, a lot of innovative things in the city. As we all know, downtown, we are short for parking, it's a very big thing. Without the parking department, you don't move the cars in the city, the residential areas in the community doesn't grow downtown. Budget-wise, I've been acting for the five years I've actually been myself, and then the next thing is a principal bookkeeper. The mayor's office this year did add us a hearing officer, which is greatly appreciated. We did add in the second and third shifts, the CFO and the mayor's office are making sure that we are having funding for that, which I think is critical. And other than that, we are adding some things with the police department to try to help them a little. We're implementing a thing where they can actually dispatch our people at night to take a little burden, because, boy, do we need police. Other than that, if there's any questions?
Counselor Stavrid.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Switching over from the individual meters to the kiosks, how has that impacted collections?
Basically, it's more to move the traffic and help the businesses in the community so people can get to the apartments. As far as the revenue goes, we just implemented some in this year, they have actually paid for themselves already. We're not in it for the revenue as much as for moving the traffic, but the kiosks, actually, people prefer them to an individual meter, because sometimes there's confusion, people park in between meters, they don't pay the right meter. With the new pay app that's coming in, you're going to actually be able to pay your parking space with the kiosk meters, or even in the parking lot, without even getting out of your car. If you're in the courthouse, you can actually put time on your meter. I think there's some great things happening with that. The kiosks is the new way to go, it is something that, I just came back from another parking thing, and the kiosks is the moving thing.
You see them everywhere.
The big thing they are talking at the last two conferences is that pretty soon, everybody, cars are going to be a thing of the past, people are going to all be leasing cars, or the self-driving cars, they're thinking it's going to be in 20 years, it'll be a whole different industry for parking. People aren't going to be parking in the downtown, you're going to have drop-off areas where the cars will actually drop off the people, and then they're going to parking outline area where the lots are. So, I think there's a lot of interesting things happening and innovative things happening in parking, there's a lot of great things happening in the city. I just think we've got some great years ahead of us.
Any other questions for Mr. Stillion?
Can we recess this till next week?
Okay, seeing none? Thank you, Mr. Stillion. I'm going to ask for a motion to recess the budget hearings of this subcommittee until next Tuesday at 5:00 p.m. Motion's been made, seconded, Counselor Kalucci and Stavrid, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, we're on recess till next week.